Good afternoon. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is called Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way, but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you so much. Before we move on to item two, just wanted to note as well that Councilmember Hodge is also here virtually. She's actually at a conference on official city business, so I wanted to let people know she's watching. So with that said, I will move then to item number two, which is called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I've got one card here in front of me, and that card is for Ann Till. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ann Till in Tempe, Arizona, and this is regarding 3B vacant properties. And so a few months ago, I came and talked about the house next to me with the tiles flying off the roof when it's windy. It's been vacant seven years, and now there's a construction fence that keeps still floating into the street sidewalk in neighbor's home even though he's been fined and whatever for it. We complained about the roof and paint condition in 2020, but those were closed. And then we complained about the tile flying around the neighborhood in August 2023, but it remains open. Or the permit remains, or the complaint remains open, but nothing's been done by the homeowner. The permit, he had a permit approved in January of 2023, and no construction was done. Then he put the fence up a couple of months ago and said he intended to leave it there for another seven years because the neighbors complained about his property. He was allowed to re-up the permit until January of 2025, even though he's done no work and has violations. And he put a dumpster in the yard a few weeks ago. He came once and did some demo, and it's full of weeds. Then there's 2129 South Los Feliz. It's been boarded up for years. We started putting in complaints a few years ago, but those were closed. It's full of two-foot-high weeds right now. They got a permit in February, but they haven't done anything yet. In 1912, East Palm Craft, half the roof was missing for two and a half years. It was half torn down a year and a half ago. That's a total of four years. Tickets were put in a few years ago, but those were closed. But the city put up a safety fence in August, but the fence isn't secure now. It's flying open, and they had an active permit, but then they re-upped it, but nothing's been done. So those just keep sitting there, nothing done. And so vacant homes take away from housing inventory, and there's a significant number of them around town that are infinitely vacant. They're blighting neighborhoods, like people won't want to live next to them, and investors are buying them, and I think intentionally blighting a lot of times. And then you see the adjacent house get boarded up, and the one next to it, and then finally it gets torn down for multifamily housing. So I have lots of pictures of that. So I'd like to see quit allowing permits to be up, re-up when they have pending violations, make them fix the violations first if needed to fix issues, have a probationary maybe type permit.
10 more seconds.
Yeah, after six months of a permit without inspections, maybe require a schedule from the property owner, increase the cost of permitting if the previous project wasn't completed for vacant lots, tax those significantly more because they're taking away from our housing. Don't allow fencing on the property.
And that's time, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
No worries. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That is the only card I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing that, I'll close that portion of the meeting and move on here to item number three, A Transit Service Update and Origin and Destination Study. And I know staff's got a presentation for us.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sam Stevenson, Transit Manager, and with me this evening is Aaron Xavier, Manager of Transit Service Planning and GIS over at Valley Metro. So this evening, I'm going to provide a brief update for our transit program, and then I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, who's going to give us a detailed dive into some of the recent findings from the regional origin and destination survey. So here's a quick look at what we're going to cover this evening. And then here are the two performance measures that are most closely related to our transit program. So those would be the 20-Minute City and the Transit Satisfaction Survey. And this slide depicts the many different options that make up our robust multimodal transit system here in Tempe. So we have local and express bus, our orbit and flash circulator system, light rail, street car, ADA paratransit, and a network of improved bicycle and pedestrian facilities as well. And here's what it costs to operate our transit program. So this year, we expect to spend just under $68 million to provide transit service here in Tempe. The majority of those costs are funded through our dedicated transit sales tax. However, it's also important to note that we receive a significant amount of funding through the regional tax, Proposition 400. That tax is due to expire at the end of 2025, and absent that funding, we'd be unable to sustain the level of service that we're providing today. Ridership. So during 2023, we carried over 6.5 million passengers through our transit network here in Tempe. We're seeing a strong return to transit following the pandemic. So when the pandemic hit, we saw a reduction. As a region, we're seeing a lot of growth, specifically here in Tempe, very strong return. Streetcar and Orbit are showing some of the highest growth levels since the pandemic. And our streetcar system, which, as you all know, opened in May of 2022, we recorded our millionth boarding last November, so just an exciting milestone for us. Some of our recent transit service changes. So last October, we partnered with the city of Mesa and Valley Metro. We extended local bus service along Rio Salado, east of Marketplace and into Mesa. This extended transit service to a portion of Tempe that was previously unserved, so very exciting for us. And then this summer, actually this month, we're working with ASU to conduct outreach related to the flash route. So the flash, we previously proposed elimination of that service due to a decline in ridership. We heard from the public that that was not a very popular approach, and so we've worked with ASU, and we've come back up with another alternative, which adjusts the routes, the frequency, and the span of service, and we're going to be taking that through public outreach this month. We'll be coming back to you all to discuss this one in much further detail, but I just want to highlight that we're still performing some preliminary analysis related to the potential extension of streetcar east from the terminus at Marina Heights, along Rio Salado, beyond Marketplace, and into Mesa. The previous study that we did related to this identified potential corridors for the streetcar extensions. This study specifically takes a closer look at where the potential stations could be located, as well as where the streetcar could be configured within the cross-section of the roadway. And again, one of our strategic priorities is transit satisfaction, and this one specifically is one that's been accelerated by the council. So we're working diligently to, in attempt to improve the satisfaction of transit service in Tempe, get that closer to our target of 75%. And here's how we're doing that. So because, you know, when we hear about transit satisfaction, it's a survey that's performed every couple of years here in Tempe. And so by nature of it being a survey, we hear a lot of comments and feedback from the public that gives us some insights as to how we can improve that level of satisfaction. One of the most common themes that we hear is related to the lack of shade at our bus stops as our passengers and our community waits for transit service to arrive. And you're all familiar, we've presented this before, but we have a new transit shelter design, very bold, iconic designs. You can see the concepts here. We have manufactured our first shelters, and we have the site preparations completed for those. We expect by the end of this month, we'll have our first one installed. So we're really excited about that. We think it's going to be a game changer for our program and really help to provide shade in locations that just don't currently have that amenity. Other themes that we hear through the Transit Satisfaction Survey are related to the reliability and the frequency of our transit service. And on that note, our Transportation Commission had asked that we take a closer look at some potential strategies to better prioritize transit service here in Tempe. So some of those tools may include transit lanes, traffic signal priority at some of our intersections, and taking a closer look at how our bus stops are configured in the roadway. Again, just in attempt to try and enhance the reliability of the service and speed it up for those who are using it. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, who's going to provide an update of the origin and destination study.
Thank you very much, Sam. Mayor Woods, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. Just talk a little bit about a very large, important survey that we do every few years at Valley Metro, which is the Regional Transit Service, which is the origin and destination survey. So I'd like to go a little bit over the background and the purpose of that study, the travel trends that we saw emerging from the data that we collected, the changing riders that we observed, and the needs that they've told us that they have for transit, and the conclusions, broadly speaking. So this was survey data collected last spring, essentially, so February to May of 2023. It covered all modes, so rail, bus, express, commuter, circulator, things of that nature. And 22,000 surveys were collected, both on weekdays and weekends, and specifically in Tempe, we had about 2,500 collected surveys. So the travel trends that we noted, so first and foremost, kind of the elephant in the room, that COVID did take a big bite out of COVID transit ridership. So here we see actually the weighted survey responses across the different surveys that we've done. So they're weighted to actual ridership, so this does reflect the ridership that we are seeing on the transit system. The gray is bus and rail, so those are multimodal trips. Green is rail only, and purple is bus only. But I would note that in Tempe, the ridership recovery has been spectacular. In part, I think Sam had noted this, so rail is growing a lot faster than the bus, and on the bus side, among those different modes, circulators are really growing fast. So with Tempe having such a good representation with streetcar and light rail on the rail side and circulators in the orbit system, you're actually doing a lot better, I think, than most of the cities. And I think you compound that with, you know, really good dense development and things of that nature that have allowed the city to recover a lot faster. So we see that here, month over month, in the ridership that I show here. And so as we went into the survey, we knew a lot of folks had left us. We wanted to know who had left, who had stayed, and potentially, how can we use this data to help us recover our former glory of ridership? So one of the hypotheses that we had was that a lot of the folks that were transferring on the system probably dropped off, but that didn't seem to be the case in the data, as you can see here, 45% in 2019, only up slightly actually from 2022 to 2023. And in Tempe specifically, you have a much lower rate of transfers, which I think speaks to the convenience of the system and the way that it's been designed to get folks from destination to origin and vice versa fairly efficiently. And that's actually down from our previous survey. And so on this map, we show a couple of different things geographically. So one thing, as we track the origin and destination pairs across the city, we noted that the largest increase in the trips that we're seeing are actually the longer trips, and the shorter trips are actually showing the most shrinkage. So there are a couple of hypotheses as to why that is, potentially the growth of micro mobility options like e-scooters and e-bikes, the way that TNCs are essentially moving in on the territory of transit. But one interesting thing that we noted from this graph or this map was that the population growth that we're seeing across the region doesn't necessarily map onto the higher or lower demand for transit. So in Tempe, you see, you know, doing really well, drawing a lot of trips from North Phoenix, from Mesa, and so forth, but you'll also see the dark purple in Tempe, which is the population growth being high, is pretty close to what you see in downtown Phoenix, but of course, you don't see the same growth in the travel demand. So, you know, as we look at the data and try to figure out what are the changing needs of the folks, why might we be seeing those kind of disparate dynamics? One thing that might help explain it is that the home-based work trip is no longer the most common trip. So often in planning, we used to think of the person that we were planning to was the peak hour commuter, the person that's going to the central business district and coming back. They're traveling in or traveling generally at the AM peak and the PM peaks, but we don't really see that trend as much. So this was actually the first survey where home-based other trips, so things like going to medical appointments, going to church, seeing your friends, things of that nature, rose on the weekday, and that overtook the number-one spot. And a bit of reversal of the trend on weekends. So essentially, what that's telling us is that there's a diversification of the nature of the trips that folks are taking. We can't just have this kind of single, one-track mindset about who are we serving and how are we, you know, scheduling the trips, orienting the routes, and things of that nature. So I definitely need to do a better job in covering all those different land uses in a way that, you know, perhaps we weren't doing so well before. Another hypothesis that we had was that a lot of the folks that left us had cars, and that we were going to see a lot more zero-car households in the survey, but that also didn't come to pass, as you can see over the past several iterations of the survey. The zero-car household population, which is still our predominant demographic, did not change significantly since COVID. And in fact, you know, in Tempe, you see that it's a little bit higher, but when you dig into that a little bit, you see that it's a lot of university students, which is understandable, and also that those folks don't tend to have driver's licenses as well. So one other trend that we noted was that women were unfortunately leaving the system a bit faster than men, so now men essentially outnumber women two to one. There are a lot of hypotheses again as to why that is, but, you know, we're trying to reach out and especially grow our ridership in this demographic because we see there's kind of a big hole among our ridership among women. So really trying to tackle, you know, is it perceptions of security? Is it the way that trips potentially need to be chained, or things of that nature? One encouraging trend, I think, is the dramatic rise in the use of digital wayfinding. So as you can see here over the past few surveys that we've done, the use of digital versus non-digital has essentially flipped in proportion. So about nine in 10 folks are now relying on things like the Valley Metro app or the website and things of that nature to pay their fare, track their rides in real time, understand the schedules, and things like that, whereas offline tools like the Transit Book, which we retired, calling customer service, or texting next ride has fallen significantly. So as we lean into providing those sources and making them more convenient, more robust, more accurate, we think that will hopefully build ridership as well. So in conclusion, most riders still do lack access and ability to drive, so there was no sharp increase in the zero-car households, but still a key demographic among the ridership that we see. Riders are continuing to migrate to that online transit info, so making sure that that is accurate and up to speed with all the major metros of the country is going to be essential in maintaining competitive advantage with, you know, TNCs and things of that nature. And finally, that the gender gap has risen significantly, and that if we want to kind of crawl our way out of the hole of ridership that we're currently in, that appealing to the needs of females going forward is going to be a critical element of that. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. Council, any comments or questions? Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I just want to tell you both that you did a great job, and you do wonderful work for Valley Metro and for the city of Tempe. So I just really appreciate it, and keep up the good work, and let's try to get those women numbers up also. And but anyway, keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Garlott?
Thank you for coming and sharing the information with us. Regarding women, the first thing I think of is safety. And do you have statistics or information regarding the safety of women and the safety period on the Valley Metro on the traveling?
Yeah, so that's a good question, Councilmember. We had a survey done about a year before the survey was conducted, well, maybe about six months before, so pretty recent relative to the sample. And one thing that we found was that perceptions of safety among women on the light rail and, you know, the rail system generally was more or less on par with those of males. So it skewed heavily, so it was a scaled one to five. I think 80-plus percent of both male and female were both fours or fives. On the bus side, however, there was a lot more threes, so kind of middling perceptions of safety on the bus system. So that kind of mirrors what we're seeing in terms of the lack of growth potentially on bus, is being impacted by that middling perception of safety by women. There has been a renewed effort to understand and probably do more surveying on, you know, is it perceptions of safety and how can we improve the safety on the system? So I think one salient difference between the rail and the bus system is that the rail system has its own dedicated security force and the bus system does not, unfortunately. So those bus drivers, we do ask a lot of them to, you know, enforce fares, to, you know, be on time, to operate safely. And I think, you know, just adding that extra onus of being the security guard and the only, you know, point of contact on that bus is often challenging and presents problems for us. So I think we have stepped up, I think, as an agency in recent years in terms of tracking the number of safety incidents, which do remain low, and I think, you know, when you compare us nationally, we do pretty well. We're also partnering with some local PDs across the region to, I believe they call it Project Blue Ride, which essentially, you know, cops will go out on the bus and ride our particularly problematic routes and try to make it safer and try to nip things in the bud in that sense. But it's definitely something that we see as needing to improve on.
Okay, because I think you can increase security, and you can make some of those changes, but if the perception is still there that somebody doesn't feel safe, all the good work that you do is it's still the perception. So I appreciate that you're trying to look at that and hopefully make those differences because we'd like more people to be riding. So I think you guys are going in the right direction. Just looks like we still have some work to do there as partners with you also. The other thing I was going to say is if somebody doesn't have the Valley Metro app on your phone, it is super easy, so you should get it and use it. It is absolutely wonderful. And then regarding our bus shade protecting areas, a couple of years ago, when we were just, we were looking at what the bus stops would look like and the art designs, when it was at the library, when I just had that great presentation that was down there, and sustainability was down there also, we were talking about the art. And when we came back into a session here at the city hall, I'd asked, can we do specific art reflecting of the neighborhoods? And I was told that we could, so like the equestrian neighborhoods could have a horse at the bus stop, or a neighborhood that does a lot of bike riding could have a bike behind theirs. And you guys had said that that was possible, and you were looking at doing that. Is that still possible? And how does a neighborhood contact you and say, if we're getting a new bus stop, we would like to suggest art?
Absolutely, Councilmember Garlott. So yes, we are working with Public Art and Rebecca Rothman and her team on several projects right now. One of them, which we're very excited about, is actually working with some artists to indigenize several of the bus shelters around town. So there'll be more than one location at strategic locations around the city, but we're working on designs. And you're absolutely correct that part of the new shelter design includes panels that can be customized and really, you know, taken to the next level, so to speak, with different arts. So we're also working with a developer, one of our new developments in South Tempe, the Electric Pickle you all may be familiar with. There's an art component to that development, and we're integrating that with the bus shelter.
Oh, great.
So as far as neighborhoods, certainly it's possible, you know, through neighborhood grant opportunities and things like that. I certainly expect that as we continue to work through the process of integrating art with the new designs, we'll see more of that.
And is that something that would go, that Shauna, her department, would notify the neighborhoods that that's a possibility that they could look at? Because if the neighborhood doesn't know about it, then they're not going to do anything. But if they can know about it in advance and then be able to think about it with their community, I think that would be wonderful.
Absolutely, yeah. We can certainly work with Shauna and, you know, get the word out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, thank you so much. Great presentation. I also think that with the safety with women, with the real-time center coming, I think that's going to help out a lot because I think that's going to help with confidentiality about safety and getting that out there. My question is, what is the percentage of kids under the age of 18 using the free bus passes? And do we have a breakdown of demographics of area of where the kids are at versus, you know, like our, I know our high school students use it, but is it more in the south or is it in the north? I'm just curious about the information on the youth.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. We do have some data related, well, we have usage data for the Youth Transit Pass Program. We, in recent years, we've, I believe we've been seeing a decline in utilization for that program. We don't have boarding-specific information at this point for those passes. It's something we can certainly look into. One of the exciting things, you know, we've talked a little bit about the mobile app being a new technology. Another very exciting regional project is the Fair Collection System Modernization Project, and that's going to extend the ability for everyone and anyone to obtain a smart card. And the Youth Transit Pass will be transitioning over to that new technology as well. Our transit store is working hand-in-hand with Valley Metro to deploy that technology. So as part of that, we'll certainly look into trying to break down some more of the demographics, demographic data, and areas where those passes are most commonly used.
Okay, and my last thing is, is there any way that maybe we can work with, I think, I don't think the kids is getting the information as strongly as they could. Is there any way we can work with the school district to make sure that our kids know more about the passes, like when they coming into high school? Freshman and sophomore year is probably the most predominant years they're going to use it, and is that going to be part of the package? I can talk to Tempe Union, but I also want our kids to be able to utilize it and know about it because I've ran into some kids who had no idea they could have got a free pass.
Yes, absolutely. We can look at the outreach that we perform related to that program because you absolutely agree, you know, the program's great, extending the, you know, access to the transit system to our youth here in Tempe, and we'd like to see that program grow as well. So yes, let us, let us look into our approach to marketing that.
And my last, and my last question, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Councilmember. I was just going to say that we at Valley Metro can also contribute our resources in terms of marketing. We do, you know, pretty robust social media outreach, and we might even have Sam do a TikTok or something for the program.
That would be great. TikTok, I love it. My last question is for our seniors, and I know that they have their own program, but how are we outreach it to them to make sure? Because I know a lot of the times they feel like they're not as mobilized as they can be, and we would love to get them immobilized. Is there something that we're doing around that to make sure that our seniors are getting what they need adequate transportation also?
Yes, Councilmember. So in Tempe, one of the, one of the programs that we extend to seniors is access to our ride choice, the region's ride choice program. So it's an on-demand taxi-style program. The user pays, I think, $3 per trip, and then the city subsidizes, I believe, $15. And so that, basically, for $3, riders can access anywhere within approximately an eight-mile radius of wherever it is they're, you know, they're going. So we have in the past, you know, we've, we've reached out to, we've done some work with Friendship Village and some other targeted locations around the city. We've presented on some of these programs, but certainly point taken. I think, you know, potentially, we could do some more to advertise that program certainly is a valuable asset to our senior community.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeVar?
Thank you, Mayor. So on top of that, I mean, that was a great, something you pointed out, because Colorado, I believe, does a Uber, $2 Uber ride for within the city limits for certain incomes of elderly or even kids, not kids, but the offer, it's a, I know that, I thought it was Colorado. I believe, does a Uber, two-dollar Uber ride for within the city limits for certain incomes of elderly or even kids, not kids. But the offer, it's a, I know that, I thought it was Colorado and I thought it was Denver, but I talked to somebody, this is probably over a year ago, and how they have a program that the city does offset that cost. But there's qualifiers for that and who can get that. Because that was a benefit just to get the people to where they need to get to, what we're talking about when we talked about affordability in our housing and making sure that they can stay within place and everything like that. I know there are things out there is what I'm trying to get to. So it's something to look at. I know that, you know, also when we used to advertise for the youth bus passes, that was more robust before COVID. After COVID, I think we kind of like, okay, let's steamroll this thing back up again because we're not hearing a lot of that. I know that Marcos needs in Tempe High in certain locations, they're using that bus. I know that from Marcos to Guadalupe, from Tempe High to 48th Street, those routes are really big. And then the 72 route, you know, on McClintock, which is, I think, probably one of the better ones, I would imagine. It just seems that it's a very direct Scottsdale Road. It does have great stops to get to. I think with what you're saying in terms of the new bus stops and shade and lighting was, is the biggest thing because I noticed in those stops, some of them are dim lighting, especially at night, making it a little bit safer, making it a little more of attractive. And then there's a marketing behind that to like have Manny Petty Wednesday or something like that on the bus. Who knows? I don't know. So you just kind of bring those things out and just kind of have the places and destinations kind of catered. And, you know, you have ASU games, you have basketball games, you have football games. I mean, what a great place to not drive, use the bus on a route, especially like that. So it's like highlighting these routes and then getting people a little bit more interested and attracted to what they might get used to. I think there's a possibility there. But I know that we were talking about this a long time ago, but the Uber, the two-dollar Uber ride was the one that just kind of triggered me. I know that there's a, and I want to say it's in Denver, had that deal and was kind of a cool deal. So anyways.
Councilmember, if I could, in Tolleson, I think they were maybe just ending a program that was pretty much just like that where, you know, if you had a destination or an origin within the city limits of Tolleson, that you got a subsidized Uber ride to a certain degree. And I think they got a bulk deal because of the amount of trips essentially that they were subsidizing, so.
No, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Just one more comment. I do, I would like to see Orbit in South Tempe. I get that a lot from South Tempe and every, every other area of Tempe is served except for South Tempe with Orbit. So please keep that in mind.
Understood. It's absolutely top of mind, Vice Mayor Adams. You know, the only constraint at this point is funding. But we're optimistic when we see how the future of the regional tax, you know, that I mentioned Proposition 400 expires the end of 2025. There is an initiative out there to extend that type of transportation funding. And if that's successful, we're optimistic that it may provide some opportunities for us to expand service. But at this point, we're, you know, we're holding off to see how that goes. But absolutely, I, you know, I agree with you. I think South Tempe Orbit would be great to see and certainly a part of our transportation master plan. It's been in there, South Tempe Two is the name of the route on that map. But yeah, something that we'll continue to pursue.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That will take us to item 3B, enforcement strategies for the maintenance and repair of vacant properties. All right. Drew, Mike, and Jeff. Wonderful. And all in navy blue suits. I just noticed it when you all walked up.
Trust me, Mayor, we did not plan this.
You got the memo out, Jeff. Good job.
He sent a memo out, you know, late last night.
So thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Jeff Tamielovich. I'm the Community Development Director. With me today is Mike Baxley, Deputy Director of Building Safety, and Drew Yocum, Deputy Director of Community Enhancement. The Community Development Department is aware that vacant properties primarily as a single-family residential use have become a growing concern with some of the residents in the City of Tempe. And that's going to be the focus, primary, you know, primary focus, excuse me, of today's The agenda for this presentation includes council priorities, a quick explanation of the types of vacant properties and why we're here. I'll then hand it over to Drew Yocum, who will talk about how code compliance is involved. And then Ben, Mike Baxley will step in and talk about how building safety is involved. Finally, in conclusion, we'll offer options moving forward and ask for council's direction. So this item primarily focuses on three council priorities. Priority 3.01, which is property code enforcement. Priority 3.34, community health and well-being. And priority 1.05, feeling of safety in your neighborhood. So vacant properties come in a variety of forms, an abandoned building or house, a home that doesn't have a tenant, an undeveloped lot, a property that is uninhabitable because of water or fire damage, and the list goes on. So vacant properties aren't necessarily a violation of city code. But the effects of vacant properties can create violations. There's nothing illegal about a vacant property. I just want to make that clear. Nothing illegal about an uninhabited structure, but they can sometimes create violations. So both Mike and Drew, they're going to talk about these topics today. And it should be noted that both building safety and code compliance are requiring owners to make sure that they abide by the codes, the city code, building safety code, as well as the zoning and development code.
Thank you, Jeff. So the Community Enhancement Division is responsible for handling code compliance cases across the entire city for both residential and commercial properties. We enforce the city nuisance codes, the rental housing codes, and the zoning and development codes. As Jeff had mentioned, all property owners are required to adhere to these codes regardless of their vacancy status. So what that means of whether or not a property is abandoned, unoccupied or occupied, our process does not change. We hold the responsible party is the property owner and they're responsible for all maintenance issues on site. Code compliance cases are created both reactively and proactively. Today, about forty percent of all of our cases are created from public complaints and the rest is generated from staff out in the field. Many of the most common violations we find on vacant properties include those listed in front of you here. These include things like deteriorated vegetation and landscaping. You know, this could be over high grass and weeds, dead trees or shrubs, junk trash and debris or items extored on the exterior of a structure, as well as structural issues are common as well. This could be deteriorated fences and walls, but also broken windows, unsecured doors, and deteriorated roofs. So some of the strategies we utilize to achieve compliance for properties, and again, whether they're vacant or not, fall under what we call our three-step process in code compliance. This is education, assistance, and enforcement. So our first step is always education. We want to inform property owners of existing violations and educate them on relevant city codes. Want to open lines of communication to make sure that they understand what their responsibilities or their responsibility is and answer any clarifying questions that we have. Second step would be then going forward and reviewing each case individually to see if assistance is appropriate. This is connecting property owners with resources that can help them maintain their properties. This includes things like connecting them with nonprofit agencies outside the city, could be connecting them with contractors that we have that have been approved through a procurement process, or it could be connecting them with other divisions and departments across the city. Common examples where this comes into play is when a residential or commercial property owner either has physical or financial situations that prevent them from maintaining their property on their own. And then lastly, our third step after we've exhausted education and assistance steps, then we go forward with enforcement where we utilize tools and best practices to enforce, as I mentioned, the nuisance codes, zoning codes, and rental housing codes. Many of these tools you're probably very familiar with. These are things like violation notices, citations, and abatements. But we also have tools that you might not be aware of, such as reinspection fees and habitual offender fines. These are tools that help us curb the behavior of repeat offenders, property owners that are in violation on a consistent basis for the same violation types. As mentioned before, property owners are the ones that are held responsible for property maintenance issues, again, whether the properties are vacant or not. When we determine the responsible parties, some of the most common tools that we utilize is the Maricopa County Assessor Information that helps us identify who's the responsible party for every parcel in the city. We also partner closely with Tax and License when it comes to identifying information for rental properties. We utilize the Water Bill as well as the Arizona Corporation Commission as well. At this time, I would like to make a quick note that we are aware that other jurisdictions in the valley are looking into creating ownership programs to help keep track of responsible parties. But here in the City of Tempe, we've never had an issue identifying them. We have not had an issue holding them responsible.
Thanks, Drew. I think it's important to know that it's not a silo. We're not sitting there with different divisions just doing different things. We work, we integrate all of our resources. For example, when we do have a dangerous structure out there, we can reach out to code compliance. They can go out, they can conduct boardups for us, make sure that we get a house temporarily safe or a commercial building. It's also important to note that the Fire Department is generally our first responder. If a vehicle strikes a commercial building or there's a fire in a house, the Fire Department's going to be the first person on scene. And they can make the determination there on site as to whether that, that structure is not temporarily inhabitable or not and move to have those people removed from the structure. Once they do that, though, they turn it over to building safety. And building safety comes back in and we make the determination as whether or not that structure is safe for everybody to go back into. That would be after, in the case of a fire and there was some structural damage, we would have them at a minimum, get a structural engineer to come take a look at the property, make sure that it was safe so that way we could make sure that people went back in in a safe and were not in danger of any imminent collapse. There's also one more tool that can be used from building safety, and that's our last resort, and that would be condemnation, too. So how does vacant codes or vacant buildings work with the building codes? It's important to understand what a building code does. It determines whether or not a building is safe to occupy or not. It does not determine whether or not there has to be individuals in that building. So a building can be vacant and still be compliant. We issue certificate of occupancies for buildings and that determines what is allowed to be in there as far as that occupancy is. And then last but not least, that certificate of occupancy is our determining factor for, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Drew, whether or not, in a commercial setting, say, here's a great case in point, you have a small t-shirt shop that was working in and out of a commercial building and then that goes out of business and then they go ahead and rent the place to a sandwich shop. That would be a change of occupancy and that would be a violation of the certificate of occupancy. They would need permits. We would need to go back and take a look at that. So as we move into looking at buildings that have construction projects, remodel projects, those kinds of things, the City of Tempe took some time in the, the last time that they did a code amendment. And they modified the number of days allowed for a building permit application to take place. Normally, the base code says that you are allowed 180 days and then you can ask for extensions. City of Tempe modified that to make it one year. And then you can ask for one extension on top of that of up to 180 days. They also, once we get to, the plan review is done, it's ready for them to get a permit, then they pay for the permit. We now have a modification that says you have up to one year to pass your first inspection. The base code says that you have 180 days to pass your first inspection and keep it going. It also allows in the base code to ask for an extension. The City of Tempe does not allow for extensions. It says you must pass that inspection in order to keep the project going. It's also important to note that in all of municipalities around Maricopa County, there's two municipalities that follow that type of process. Tempe is one of them. The other one would be the City of Phoenix. They allow two years for, they don't have any extensions for inspections, it's just two years to build your project. Everybody else is at 180 days or less. Drew alluded to earlier about temporary fencing. Once we get into a building permit situation to where it's an active construction site, we encourage them to have some sort of temporary fencing up to protect the site, protect the citizens from wandering onto a site that might be dangerous. The general public isn't going to have the same thoughts and ideas going onto a construction project that those are trained to be there and are supposed to be there working on it. Next one. So I alluded, I touched earlier on certificate of occupancies. Certificate of occupancies are what we issue for a building like this. That's when we can determine that it is safe to, that it'll properly exit, it's safe to occupy. But those things can be revoked and they can be revoked for quite a few things. A few of them are structural issues. It's kind of obvious, if it's going to fall down, we don't want you in there. The other thing is insanitary conditions and then also improper occupancy, too, as I was talking about earlier. Last but not least is the condemnation piece. And it is important to note that when Tempe adopted the amendments to the building code, they created that to where I would have to bring it to council and council would have to direct the building official to go ahead and condemn a building and abate that structure. As we go through this process, we, it's, we need to know that the structures still need to comply with the zoning ordinance. We do allow a little bit of grace, especially in a house that has been burned, where they has time to even apply for a permit. If you have a structure that is burned, you just don't run right out and either get an engineer or have plans drawn to rebuild your house. It takes a little bit of time there for that to occur. So we allow them that opportunity to do that. And then once they apply, here we are, we're talking about they have up to a year and a half to get that permit, which also means conversely after that, once they get that permit, they have another year to pass an inspection. So you could see a structure sitting for two and a half years under our current code that would be in process. And really, that hamstrings code enforcement because they really can't go out and do anything because they are in the process of getting it done. Once construction begins, it becomes that active construction site. And as you guys are all aware, sometimes they take just a few months or sometimes those things can take many years to do. And with that.
Moving forward, our recommendation is that staff explore a building code text amendment to reduce timeframes for applications and permits. If council would like to comment on this, we would appreciate that. You know, what would become of that is staff would hold public outreach meetings. We would bring back the request and any changes that are proposed and we would let council review and approve those changes to, as a code text amendment. As Mike stated, Tempe is one of two outlier municipalities in the valley that with, that has basically timeframes greater than 180 days for these permits and application process. By reducing the building code timeframes, we do believe that it gives enforcement a little bit more ability and especially with some of the more recent complaints that we received for fencing and the timeframes that the construction is taking, we believe that's where it's going to be able to benefit us and our residents. So with that said, do you have any comments or questions?
Sounds good. Thank you. Counselor Garland?
Thank you for bringing all of this information to us. I think this is really helpful because we do get complaints and concerns about this. And Councilmember Hodge and I went out and met with a resident and walked her neighborhood and literally stood in her front yard and saw the mess that was next to her house that she's been living next to for a very long time. Watched, looked at across the street where the shingle tiles had been coming off in the wind, the gate that had been swinging open when the wind blew. So I'm glad that we're addressing this. It just seems like, you know, it says logically in my head, it says if somebody has abandoned a property and not been in there for a while and let it go to trash, then we should be able to do something a lot- able to do something a lot sooner and to be able to correct that in the neighborhood, because that's our property values, our values for that property. And it's also, it just makes a mess of the neighborhood. And I think it is a safety concern, and I'm glad we have to put fences around some of those things, because one of the neighborhoods that we went driving through is right down the street from a school, and so I appreciate that. But, so, you know, my concern with this, I like the modifying the time codes, I think that maybe that that will help and make a difference, the sooner we can do that, the better. But I'd also like us to be able to figure out some way to look at this and say, if is there, if they're saying that they're getting, coming back and asking for an extension, is there like a percentage that says, okay, you can get an extension, but you need to have done 25% of the initial work that you were going to say, or something? Instead of people just coming in and getting an extension and an extension and doing nothing, can there be something in there that gives a percentage of the job that has to be done before you would get another percentage? That's one question. And the other one is, if there are complaints that are on that property, whether they have claimed those complaints or not, can we be able to look at that and say if there are multiple complaints on that property that we do not renew, or we don't don't renew that permit for them of an extension? Because I think if somebody is not being a very good neighbor, whether they're living there or not, I think we need, we cannot, as a city, then say, okay, you're not great to your neighbors, but because our rules here say we can, we're just going to give you the permit anyway. So, those are my two concerns.
So, we can take a look at quite a few options as far as how we extend things. You could do it as far as whether or not they've completed part of the project, or there could be financial penalties to it. We could do a number of things and take a look at that. And as staff, I think we would research those. And bring back some sort of what we believe would be a better, better result for you.
Yeah, I'd be curious to what other cities are doing.
Sure.
With that regard, I just think that that would help us a little bit more, too.
I guess I got two more.
Take a mic, any mic.
Yeah. So, part two of the question, you know, I believe that, you know, if a property is in violation, we have the address, we have the ability to address it right away. The reason we're bringing up this, you know, modification of the building code is because when they have active building permits, that's what makes it difficult for us to do the enforcement.
Okay.
While, you know, the permits are active. So, by reducing that timeframe of the building permits, it gives us the ability to do more enforcement. But when we go out and, you know, Drew's team gets a call to investigate, they go out and they investigate, now if that if that permit, or if that property does have permits at the time, it's very difficult for us to enforce, right?
Okay.
Because it's an active site.
Yeah. It, I get what you're saying, but it's just not logical. I mean, in my head, it just says we, we need to be caring for our residents and our communities better.
Right.
So, that's, I hear what you're saying, it's just frustrating that that we kind of have our hands tied.
And we have had a lot of discussions internally about this as of recent. We do know that, you know, if the, if the site isn't an active construction site, that we will still go out and issue violation notices, right? So, if they haven't begun construction, yet they have permits and they're sitting on them, we have the ability to go out and address those situations. It's, the problem is, once they start the construction, and, you know, and then it sits, and, and it doesn't, you know, sits for an entire year. So, by reducing it by 180 days, I think it's, it's, it's a sort of a happy medium, if you will.
Okay. We'll take a step forward, and hopefully that'll make a difference. Thank you.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, a couple of questions. First of all, I totally support this shorter timeframe. I think it's a great idea, and we should have done it earlier, because, you know, what Ms. Till is talking about is, you know, real, and it really does affect property values, which I think is, is a big problem. One of the most frequent complaints I get are code enforcement issues, and to have the ability to have a bigger hammer and, and get to it faster would be better. Also, is there something called an open permit? Do we have open permits at the city?
So, I'm not sure what you consider an open permit, but when a building permit is issued.
Uh huh.
It's open until it's closed.
Okay.
Is that what you were thinking about?
And what's that timeframe?
Well, until construction is completed, or if no construction occurs, it's 12 months.
So, it's 12 months to complete the project?
No, they get an extension.
Okay, so they have a...
Every time they, they pass an inspection. So, it's, it's, the way it works is, once you start that, we will give you 12 months to get your first inspection.
Okay.
You could wait another year to get another inspection, and you could drag this out for 10, 12 years.
And that's a complaint that, that I get a lot, you know, that they start construction, and then it's not resolved. So, what are we going to do about that?
Well, that would be going back to reducing it to 180 days.
Okay.
And then, we would set the milestones for 180 days. If they pass inspection, they could get their 180 days. If they stop construction, they came back, they could ask for an extension, and this is one of the ideas that we were kicking around, is they could ask for an extension, it'd be from the building official. And I would have to approve that based on extenuating circumstances that, for some reason, they couldn't move forward for that period of time.
Okay, well, I guess I would just like to see maybe more strict enforcement about that, because it's, like I said, I, I could give you a lot of examples, but I'll spare you the details this evening, but I really think that's a big problem, and we need to shorten it. Thank you very much for your presentation, it's excellent, as usual.
Thank you.
I'll take a very quick comment, then I want to go to Councilwoman Chin. I'm all in favor of you reducing the timelines here by 180 days. I think that makes a lot of sense, because the reality is, we have organizations in the city of Tempe, so it was Tempe Neighbors Helping Neighbors that was actually absorbed by Tempe Community Action Agency. So, if you're a senior, and let's say you're having an issue from a mobility standpoint when it comes to keeping up the overall quality of your property, there are nonprofits in the city of Tempe that could actually help you stay in your home and take care of other tasks or things that might cause the home to get a code compliance issue or to have some other matter pop up. So, there are organizations here that can help, and have been helping people in our community for quite some time. But if you are just simply letting a home degrade to the level that it's actually falling apart, or creating a building safety issue, or frankly, just creating an eyesore that lowers the property values of the homes around you, and really has a negative impact on the neighborhood, I don't have any sympathy for those folks at all. And so, from my perspective, if actually reducing that timeline allows you to have more code enforcement authority, I think that's something that I think we can all, frankly, get behind. And I know it's something that a lot of our residents would absolutely support, because we do want to find a way to crack down on it. And everything I know from talking to you and your team and the residents I talk to is, they very much support what you guys do. And so, there's no issue from a credibility standpoint when code enforcement is going out to address these issues, because, once again, there are groups that can help you if you're having a legitimate problem, but for the people who are just sitting on things that they're just simply not taking care of, and then degrading the value of the neighborhood, I have no patience for that whatsoever. So, I appreciate the suggestion, and I'm fully in favor of it. Councilwoman Chin?
Thank you, mayor. You took some of the words out of my mouth. I was going to mention partnering with some community organizations as needed. I'm in favor of your recommendations in reviewing any modifications, and it's not simply just the timeframes, but, and Mike, you came up and started with, you're not in a silo, but it looks like it's time to review each of the codes necessary and enforcement ability that Drew, you have to deal with, so that they're in alignment, so that you can address the, the issues that need to be addressed, and then find perhaps assistance or support for some of our residents who, you know, when I rode with municipal utilities in a truck, some homes might have a couple of branches that overhang into the alley, and they're in, they're not compliant with code. But we also knew, and the drivers told me, I think they're elderly, I think he carried the clippers in his truck to help out, because it would be dangerous for some of those residents to go out and clip for themselves. So, if we can look at our codes so that it would help staff and help the neighbors address, one, and discern, who is a neighbor who needs a little help with something? And then, let's find a partner to help, as the mayor mentioned. And who is in violation? Who is a scofflaw to those codes? And, and who do we need to really address and enforce those codes? So, I see two great bullet points on your recommendations, but I say, go beyond that, and you tell us. Take a look at the codes that you have to deal with, and let's align them.
Thank you.
For the record, bonus points for scofflaw, by the way, too. Well done, Councilwoman Chin.
That was four years.
Councilman Hodge?
Thank you, great presentation. I agree with my colleagues on shortening the time. Everything that I was going to say has been said by Councilmember Garland, again, and Councilwoman Chin, so, thank you guys so much. I agree coheartedly.
Thank you, appreciate it. Councilwoman Keating?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, for as far as direction goes, but I particularly agree with Councilmember Chin as far as kind of a wider look at maybe just kind of modernizing and updating everything that you feel should be as far as building, planning, code enforcement, all that kind of stuff. Like, the more the merrier if we think we can streamline some stuff and be more responsive to the residents, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Mayor?
On these documents, are they kind of a living document, so to speak? Because I know that, I mean, we've gone through years of code enforcement, and this is not right, but it wasn't right back then, maybe it makes more sense now, we can make some changes to that. I mean, am I under the assumption that we can always bring these back, correct? And just make tweaks? Because to the point of someone will have an extending, extenuating circumstances, situations, having that ability as a city staff to like, okay, we can make an extension on that because they hit these categories, that's, that's great. But if we don't have those abilities to hit those categories, that's also when we hear the complaints, you know, from those people that own those houses, and like, hey, listen, I can't do this because my contractors aren't going to come in until this is done, or the city, you know, whatever it may be. But I think, to my point is, these are things that, even though we go down these roads to make it more efficient, more effective, just like we're saying, there's always a way to go back to tweak them again, and again, and again, correct?
Of course. There's a process, but there's always a way.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna say, once again, you guys do an excellent job, and all of the stuff that we all hear about you in the community in terms of code compliance and building safety is always stellar. So, I think part of my frustration is the people who refuse to actually do what they need to do, and therefore take up a lot of your time, and take your time away from other things that you could be doing. So, so whatever you need to, to be able to have a more kind of proactive code, code compliance strategy, whatever, I know that everyone up here trusts you, and the community more importantly trusts you. So, I think we're all here, and very much in very big support of what you want to do. So, thank you for the suggestions.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next up, item 3C, position statement for Senate Bill 1005. Dr. Humes, and welcome, Rabani.
Good afternoon. I have to bring it down. Good afternoon, mayor, council, city manager. I'm Dr. Valisa McMillan-Humes, chief diversity officer here with the city of Tempe, and I'm joined today by Mr. Rabani Farquand, who is the chair of our human relations commission, as well as several members of the commission. We come before you today requesting a position statement in regards to Senate Bill 1005. Senate Bill 1005 prohibits, or will prohibit, the expenditure of public monies on behalf from any public entity on behalf of sustaining, implementing, promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, training, and programming. This statement would be in response or support of council strategic priority, equality of life, with an emphasis on equity and diversity. With that said, I'll make space for Rabani.
Thank you. My name is Rabani Farquand, the current chair of the city of Tempe Human Relations Commission, as she mentioned, and we put together a brief letter, which I'll read for support. Dear Mayor Woods and council, the city of Tempe is committed to equitable treatment of our community and employees regardless of race, color, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, familial status, age, disability, or military veteran status. In support and consistent with the city of Tempe's adoption of the anti-discrimination ordinance in 2014, which made it unlawful to discriminate in the city of Tempe, members of the human relations commission request that mayor and council issue a statement against Senate Bill 1005, which prohibits the disbursement of public monies on a diversity, equity, and inclusion program, or require an employee to engage in DEI training. As an employer, Tempe values the right of employees to work in a workplace environment that promotes equal employment opportunities and prohibits discriminatory practices, including sexual harassment of any form of harassment prescribed by law. Discriminate or discrimination means to exclude individuals because of race, color, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, familial status, age, or disability, and occurs whenever similarly situated individuals of a different group are accorded different and unequal treatment in the context of a similar situation. As Tempe becomes more diverse, the competencies required to foster equitable treatment of those we serve and work environments free from discrimination have expanded to include self-awareness, valuing others, understanding the impact of social inequity, and engaging diverse populations in skills and relationships to lead and implement system changes designed to eliminate disparities, and become skilled at motivating others working across difference, and building relationships within and outside of the government. Tempe continues to be an employer of choice and values the ability to create inclusive work and living environments for everyone. Sincerely, Rabani Farquand, Chair of City of Tempe Human Relations Commission.
Wonderful. All right, sounds good. Let me go to Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. What is happening in our country and our state is, is very alarming. It is mean spirited and traumatizes those individuals that are affected. It is, in my opinion, unconstitutional, as it goes against life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And it also, I want to point out, this also includes people with disabilities. How hateful is that? I mean, I just cannot believe that, well, I can believe it with our legislature, but this is very, very disturbing, and you have my full support for a letter against this. And it makes me mad that we're even having to have this conversation. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hodge?
Yes, thank you so much. You know what? I am proud and honored to be standing with my colleagues to support this letter. It is, it is a sad day. I agree with Vice Mayor, it's a sad day, but we have to come to this conclusion to write a statement about it, about something that people, there's, it's the right, it's a human right that is, you know, is affected by this, and I'm just honored and sad, saddened at the same time that we have to write a statement like this to our state, and not just the state, it's the nation, too. So, as I said, I'm just honored, and I support this 100% very much indeed. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilwoman Keating?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you both. Yeah, to echo some of my colleagues, this is, this is a trend that's happening all over the nation. We're seeing it in, of different cities and states, just across the country, and unfortunately, it's always about scapegoating the other, the haves pushing their grievances on the have-nots, and Tempe was one of the first, if not the first, city to enact a non-discrimination ordinance into its charter, which I know Mayor Woods led on to make that a reality. So, it's absolutely appropriate that we have a statement against this bill, and it's absolutely appropriate that we take the voices of the people that we represent to the state capitol, say that this is absolutely unacceptable on our state, and the city of Tempe will use its voice and use its, for lack of a better term, power platform to speak out against it. So, good work on you both, and I absolutely support that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Chin?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you to Rabani and the other HRC commissioners for your work, and Dr. Humes. I absolutely support this alongside my colleagues as well. This is the complete opposite of what we believe in in Tempe, and happy to stand proudly with you. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilman Navarro? Councilmember Navarre?
Thank you, Mayor. And Arlene, you just said it right there, the complete opposite, you know, and I appreciate you guys and the work, and, you know, I appreciate the fact the HRC taking this on and bringing it to the council, because this is exactly what the committee is supposed to do, is to be a part of this whole thing and to show that their constituents and the people that you guys represent, and knowing that you represent the city, you're doing what's great for the city, and just telling the council how you guys feel outstanding, and yes, definitely support.
Sounds good. Councilman Burrow?
I think this reflects our values that we talk about all the time, the city of Tempe values. What you're doing is the right thing, and I'm, thank you again, as, as Councilmember Chen said, to the committee for standing up and doing this, and I'm really happy to stand next to you and proud, proud of you. Thank you.
And I agree with everything everyone else had to say. It's a sad day that we have to do this, but unfortunately, as Councilwoman Keating talked about, it's a trend that's sort of sweeping the country, and I think it's very important that all of us collectively stand up and say that it's totally unacceptable. So you got my support too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the call to the audience for committee of the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction or status update this evening, so I'm going to close this item and move on to the next one. Item 5B is council committees in progress updates is needed. Any council members have any updates on items 5B1, 5B2, or 5B3? Nope. All right. That brings me to item number six, future agenda items. Members of the city council may request that agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Council members, any future agenda items you'd like to add? Seeing none, I will move on to item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. Just one quick announcement this evening, just wanted to give a thank you. I know we did a big proclamation and a sort of a big celebration for Women's History Month, and I wanted to thank Sarah Keown for all of the work that she did in arranging all of that, so I wanted to give Sarah a big thank you, and actually, could we all give her a big round of applause? So, thank you so much for taking the lead on such an important endeavor for the city of Tempe that once again also very much reflects our values as a city. That is the only announcement I have this evening. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, I have some very sad news to share. Wednesday morning, early Wednesday morning, we received call that Michael Clark, one of our park rangers, was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident on his way home from work on Tuesday evening. Michael was hired, there he is, last October, and we saw him here in the council chambers as we presented our new park rangers program to our community. He was actually a lead in our park ranger program, and prior to coming to Tempe, Michael was a U.S. Army vet and served 15 years as a law enforcement officer in the state of Washington, with the last two years as a traffic unit as a motorcycle officer, which is a really tough division to get into. So it tells you a little bit about him. He, while he was here for only a few months, he became a quick mentor to our park rangers and took great pride in working for the city. Our hearts go out to Michael and his family. Michael enjoyed cooking, traveling, and riding his motorcycle around the country with his wife of 11 years, Laura. He relished spending time with friends and family, including his two adult children. I think that hits home for all of us here in the city. So my deepest condolences to Laura and his entire family on behalf of the city. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Definitely thoughts and prayers go out to Michael's family during a very difficult time. Thank you. That brings us to item number eight, which is adjournment. The next scheduled work city session is going to be on March 25th, 2024. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.